Alrighty, board members, since tonight is reorganization, I will read the opening statement. We'll take roll call and then we will take nominations for Chair of the Board for this year. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M. Pursuant to Section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on January seventeen, two thousand twenty-five, and it has been posted to the municipal website. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order two-nine-two in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by the members of the public, notice that during this extension of state emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom. Once trans- okay, I'm repeating myself. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and will be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, if you could take the roll call, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yeah.
Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Board members, now, uh, we are moving into reorganization of the Board and I would ask for nominations for Chair.
I would like to nominate Stephen Cohen for another year.
Second.
And do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, and do, uh, do we have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
And second?
Yeah.
All right, Claudia, if you'd take a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I guess.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, I turn the meeting over to you as Chair.
Thank you. Well, thank you all. I appreciate your vote of confidence. Um, Happy New Year. Okay, um, we have two resolutions this evening and three applicants.
Steve, we're not done with?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to be-
Reorganization. So the next thing would be nomination for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Steve Schreiber for Vice Chair.
And do we have a second?
Yes.
And do we have a motion to close nominations?
Motion's a move.
And second?
I'll second.
All right, now, uh, if the Board wishes, I think we could hold the roll call vote, also take care of the next two matters, appointment of Attorney and Secretary, and do all three of them then with one roll call vote, if that works for everyone.
Yes.
So moved. I'm comfortable with it, yes.
Okay. So then, the next two matters are my reappointment as your attorney for this year and the appointment of, uh, or reappointment of our Board Secretary, Claudia.
So moved.
Who was that?
Stephen Schreiber.
And second?
I'll second it.
All right, now, Claudia, let's take a roll call vote to cover these, uh, three items, please.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now I believe we can move on to the resolutions.
Correct.
All right, there were two resolutions that are in your packet. The first is, uh, case number Z twenty-four dash three thirty-eight, one ninety-five, South Harrison Block eleven zero zero one, Lot twenty-six in the R five in the R five S, the R five T zone. So are there any comments on the resolution, clarifications, questions, comments, or motions?
I'll move approval, Floyd.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
Second.
Thanks. Claudia, can you call the roll? Claudia, you're muted.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next hearing, or the next resolution is case number Z twenty-four dash five sixty-three, uh, ninety-five, Library Place, Block twelve oh one, Lot eight in the R four zone. R four eight? Doesn't make sense. In the R one slash B zone. Okay, same thing, resolutions are in your packet, questions, comments, or a motion?
I, I think the, uh, the height to setback ratio is shown correctly in the in the table, but within the body of the text, it's not quite right. I think it needs to be a colon. So on page four and five, the one point five, it's supposed to be colon zero point three eight.
Got it. Thank you.
So that appears twice.
Yep.
Any other comments? Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to proof.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have three applications this evening. Claudia, I assume there are people waiting to be admitted?
I'm just giving one second. I guess, um, gotta move people over. Brian? We can't hear you.
Ah, sorry about that. Good evening here.
What do you need me to bring over?
Uh, for thirteen prospect, uh, this is the one that we've requested to be carried. So I, I actually don't have anyone else, uh, for, for this one to bring over.
Okay. All right.
Okay, well, first of all, um, Karen, are the notices in order for this?
Uh, yes, the applicant re-noticed for this application, uh, and the noticing is in order. The Board has jurisdiction tonight. I gather, though, the applicant is asking to carry it.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Karen, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, uh, we did, uh, we're able to get notices out. Uh, it was a little challenging, uh, to, to, to do so on this one. Uh, but, uh, ultimately, our engineer as hell has a little bit more work to do. Uh, when we came from our recommendation from HPC and as you saw in, uh, uh, the memos from your professionals, there are a few details that we'd like to be able to show you, particularly about the trash enclosure uh, and the, uh, revised, uh, program along the left side of the property. Uh, there's currently a recessed driveway that's going to be, uh, leveled out and the recommendation from both from professionals and from HPC, uh, was to, to have some details to show about that. Unfortunately, they're just not completed yet. Um, ideally, we'd like to carry it without notice. We did grant an extension to the MUL deadline through, uh, through March, um, but certainly understand your discretion, but that, that would be our request tonight.
And Mr. Kenny, you're not, the plans that you will be submitting don't seek uh, any additional variances than, uh, I think what was reviewed by Mr. Bridger in December.
That is correct. In fact, the original application, uh, had variances for front yard parking. Uh, we've actually removed those from the plan. The really only variances will, will be related to the, the elevator tower that, that ultimately, we believe the Board and HPC, uh, really liked. Uh, but in removing the parking spaces, reducing it down to one ADA space, um, what was a recessed driveway kind of, uh, headed below ground at a, at a kind of steep angle has been lifted up to be level uh, with the street for better ADA access, but there's, i- it changes what the view of the trash enclosure would be. Uh, and the recommendation from HPC, uh, would be to, to be able to show that in some more detail than we did conceptually and, uh, that is not yet complete.
So will you be, will we be hearing this in March? Are you going, you carrying it till March? Would you be able to submit it for the February hearing?
We believe we would be able to submit it for February, uh, the, and particularly that we, I believe the nature of what will be revising would be not revised plan so much as exhibits, but we'll, in either event, should have all of that to, uh, your professionals in time for the February meeting, if, if that fits your schedule. Uh, certainly understand, um, if it doesn't, we would, we would yield to, um, what works for, for, uh, the Board and, and what the schedule is, uh, for other applications, but we would be able to have that in time for February.
Eric, do we have?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, excuse me. Um, yeah, this is, you know, no, uh, offense intended, this is the second time this has happened in two months, so, uh, I have other applications that I'm not going to hold up. Uh, I'm gonna place them on the February application date and then we could hear this case on the, the twenty-sixth of March, if that's agreeable. Um, then you won't have to notice, but, um, I can work for you next month, but I didn't want to, it might not get heard and get bumped and I don't want to-
Understood.
So for the benefit of anybody in the, uh, audience who may have been here tonight for the application, it's being carried to March twenty-sixth and the applicant will not be required to do further noticing regarding that application.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, Brian, for the next one, who do you need to-
All right, um, looking down the list, if it's in the same order that, uh, that I see, uh, the first two, Sheriff Joseph and David Schmidt, uh, and then James McKnight and Matt Flynn.
The first one is Joseph and, yes, the next one, that's, uh, that's case Z twenty-four dash five thirty-five, eight seventy-four Kingston Road.
Yes, the noticing is in order and the Board has jurisdiction tonight to hear the application.
Okay, um, okay, let's, uh, begin. All right, this is, as I said, case Z twenty-four dash five thirty-five, eight seventy-four Kingston Road, Block forty-seven oh three, Lot thirty-five in the R five T zone. Uh, Karen, as you said, everything is, all the paperwork is in order, the noticing?
Correct.
Okay. All right, um, Mr. Bridger, can you give us just a summary of your memo?
Yes.
And Derek, let me just swear you in for the evening. Do you swear firm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sheriff Joseph and Divya Pulus are the owners and applicants of eight seventy-four Kingston Road. It's located in the R five T zone. They are seeking a, uh, C-two variance to permit the construction of a new home in exception to the required front yard setback and lot area. Um, the property's non-compliant with regard to the required twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty square foot lot area. The existing is twenty thousand seven hundred eighty-seven square feet and the existing single-family home is not complying with respect to the required front yard setback along Shady Brook. The required is thirty-eight and a half feet and the existing is thirty point zero eight feet. The applicant is proposing to demolish, uh, the existing one-story house and construct a new approximately, uh, forty-three hundred square foot home featuring living room, dining room, family room, kitchen, four bedrooms, four and a half bath and an attached two-car garage. Um, it appears they will use some of the existing foundation. The project requires variances for lot area requirements twenty-one seven eighty, existing is twenty thousand seven eighty-seven and the setback on, uh, Shady Brook, uh, the required front yard setback is thirty-eight and a half feet and it's proposed will be thirty point zero one feet. Um, the applicant should advise if they have approached any adjoining, uh, landowners, um, to see if, uh, excuse me, there's anybody willing to sell a portion of our lot to cur the deficiency or purchase the subject lot. Um, they've requested consideration under the C-two criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer that. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy?
All right, uh, Ms. Chairman Cohen, uh, thank you so much, uh, members of the Board. Happy New Year. Um, my name's Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee. I'm here, uh, on behalf of the new homeowners here who are on tonight, Cherish and, uh, Divya. Uh, we'll hear from them in a moment, uh, and I'll, don't let the, the size of the team we brought, uh, fool you. Ultimately, we're here about a, uh, lot size variances of existing lot with existing home. We'll show that the lot next door unfortunately is also undersized and not a source for, uh, acquiring any additional property. Uh, the second lot, uh, possibly, that will show you, uh, that it likely would create a side yard setback uh, situation with them, but we've approached them and there has not been interest in, in selling that piece of property. Um, we'll also talk about, uh, the second front yard setback. Uh, the existing home, as Mr. Bridger said, uh, is about thirty feet from, uh, this second street and we're proposing to reuse the foundation and essentially, uh, have the home in that same location, though as you'll see, um, altering the garage currently, there is a side-facing, non-compliant, essentially front-facing garage. Um, we're going to rebuild that and set it back eight feet to comply. Uh, so the amount of home, uh, that be, to be reused, uh, from a foundation perspective is, um, actually quite limited compared to what is there now. So we pulling, uh, a big piece of the new home back from the current location and you'll, we'll also show you the, um, adjacent properties, though it is an interesting street from a prevailing setback perspective. Uh, it, it is a corner, uh, so there's not many examples and it's a curved street and the homes, you know, immediately next door have actually a shorter setback. So it's an interesting situation from a prevailing setback perspective, but we are both honoring the existing home location, but pulling it back slightly and with less frontage along the street than there is currently. Fixing, uh, the non-conforming garage situation and, uh, we hope you'll see in a way that makes sense with the rest of the street. Uh, in addition to our property owners, uh, for their home tonight, who'll introduce themselves in a second. Uh, we've got David Schmidt, our, uh, civil engineer, James McKnight, our architect, uh, and Matt Flynn, our planner to provide testimony. Uh, if it makes sense to have them all sworn in upfront, we could do that or, or as, as they speak, uh, Karen, I'm not sure what's, what's easier on your-
We can, I think we can swear every, everyone in. Um, let's see, Mr. Flynn, Mr. Schmidt, you're muted at the moment. Also, Mr. Joseph and Ms. Pulus, so if you would all, and Mr. McKnight, if you would all raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
I do.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, with that, uh, Cherish, if you want to unmute yourself and, uh, if you guys want to introduce yourself, uh, to the Board, uh, and, uh, you know, your connection to Princeton and your, your, uh, soon-to-be-new home.
Sure. Happy New Year and good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Cherish and I'm here with my wife, Divya. Uh, you guys say hello?
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year.
Uh, we have two voices, Austin, yeah, and Brian, twelveth and five, and one thing unique about them is they share the same birthday. We had a, or, it was like last week, uh, but anyway. So first of all, we'd like to thank you all for taking the time to consider our matter tonight. It's truly been a, a journey to get here. We, a little bit about, uh, us, we sold our property in twenty-twenty-two and we moved from Bridgewater to Princeton. You know, the, the market was, after losing out to several bits, we were fortunate to finally secure this home and we are really excited about this place and hopeful that we'll be able to move forward with the next steps. Um, thank you again, uh, for your time and attention. Do you have to go ahead and add anything?
Yeah, pretty much, uh, Cherish covered everything. Um, you know, investing in a house in Princeton is not just about owning a property. It's about creating, um, foundation for our, and educational success for my two kids. Um, you know, in this current market, we had been struggling to get a house and, um, you know, we are fortunate to, you know, lock one in Princeton, um, you know, safe and serene environment and, you know, uh, children's growth is the priority for us. So there's a lot thought, a lot of thoughts, uh, put in, uh, before we signed up, uh, for this. Um, kids, jobs, safe environment, uh, and we couldn't come up with a better, better place and we consider ourselves lucky and thank you so much and back to you, Ryan.
Thank you so much, um, and, uh, don't, don't go, uh, anywhere to, uh, yet. If it's all right, uh, with the Board, Mr. Chairman, um, we have one set of exhibits we'd like to, to mark, uh, this evening, a slideshow. I believe it's eighteen slides we intend to show.
Sure, please.
All right, uh, if I remember where the share button is, I will do that now. So, uh,
One more.
Cherish, um, if we could, just the first few slides here, I believe that this is the Princeton zoning map showing, Mr. Bridger said, the, uh,
I love you.
R five zone, um,
It's not up.
I don't see anything.
No, we don't see it.
Uh, apologies, I, uh, you know, that is the second time I did that today, so let's try it again.
There we go.
There we go.
Apologies, uh, uh, there's an extra button that, uh, Zoom has introduced that I've, uh, uh, failed to, uh, to master, so apologies. Uh, Cherish, uh, if you could, um, on slide two here, I know Mr. Bridger said this was at the, your, your property's in the R five former township zone. Is that arrow point, uh, to, uh, to where your house is going to be?
That's right.
And, and across the street, though, that's the, that's the, uh, uh, the lake that you're excited to be near?
Yes, of course.
Uh, then, as we usually do, uh, slide three, this is an aerial photo of the neighborhood, uh, so we're kind of zoomed in here. You can see that's, uh, um, your, your street and the, the green pin is where your house will be.
That's right.
Zooming in a little bit further, I guess, uh, uh, the blue box is your property.
That's right.
Uh, and, um, and then as we get into the, uh, neighborhood view here, um, uh, on the top side, um, that's, uh, a neighbor that you know quite well, because he's going to help you with your, your home, uh, above. Uh, and the other lot that is, uh, undersized in the neighborhood and then the other houses kind of surrounding you. Is that correct? If your, your house in blue?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, uh, so, uh, I'm, they're not, certainly not going anywhere, but obviously before we switch to our, um, engineer, if there are any questions for the homeowner applicant, happy to, to take them now.
Mr. Kennedy, I just have one, uh, question or clarification. You'd indicated that your client did contact the owner, I'm assuming?
Yes, uh, and I appreciate, we have a, a future slide on that, but I might as well-
But you do, okay, that's fine, when, when we get to the slide.
I'll note for the record that we have a, a picture of the letter with the, you know, the details of the neighbor's name and address kind of blocked out, uh, but, uh, we'll submit separately as a, uh, you know, for, for your, for your file, the actual letter and, and postal information.
And I'm, and your clients, is it their testimony then that they got no response to that letter?
Uh, Cherish, uh, is it, is it correct that, uh, we on your behalf, uh, reached out to, uh, uh, the neighbor and this picture to the left, um, who may have some property and that there was no, uh, no response or interested in the purchase?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so with that, uh, our next witness, uh, will be our engineer, uh, David Schmidt. David, if you could briefly, uh, give the Board the benefit of your, uh, background and credentials, so I could have you accepted as an expert here tonight?
Sure, um, I'm a professional engineer, um, the state of New Jersey, uh, got my license in nineteen ninety-six and been practicing ever since.
Well, David, you've testified for us before. I think we'll accept your credentials.
Many thanks. So, uh, David, I guess we're, we're, start on, uh, slide six here. This is the, uh, existing conditions of the property. Maybe we're just going to quickly take the Board through, uh, what's, what's there now and particularly, I guess we have set, uh, circled that one setback in question that we'll, we'll be talking about tonight.
Okay, well, I, as you said, we're at eight seventy-four Princeton Kingston Road, which is a corner lot and it's block, as we said, forty-seven oh three, Lot thirty-five. So if you were looking at the scan or at the picture right here, uh, to the bottom, you have Shady Brook Lane and on the other side, we have, um, New Jersey Kingston, Princeton Kingston Road. Um, since we have a corner lot, you have two setbacks, um, uh, two prevailing setbacks to, to handle. So currently, the house is accessed from Shady Brook Lane. There's a ranch house on the property. Um, and we are, we're going to the next slide, but basically, we're just going to demolish this existing house and utilize the, uh, the footprint for it. Um, as we said, the property is twenty-seven, is twenty thousand seven eighty-seven. It's zero point four seven, zero point four seven two acres. Um, per the ordinance, the lot area should be twenty, twenty-one thousand seven eighty or zero point five. We're currently nine hundred and ninety-three square feet short. We're also seeking a front yard prevailing setback. Uh, as we see on the plans, you have the typical twenty-five-year setback in the front along Shady Brook Lane and then what we do is we request from the township, um, they, they go with the prevailing setback, which is the number of houses down the street and they give me the answer and the answer they sent for the prevailing setback is thirty-eight feet point five. So when we, it's, it's not clear on here, but the prevailing setback, I don't know if you could point it out. It's basically where we indented the property. So this is what Ryan's saying, we're holding the foundation in the front point and then we're notching it back and then we're holding the thirty point five as we extend the garage and have a side entry garage. Um, the applicant is proposing a two-and-a-half-story forty-three, forty-six square foot house, single-family home. Uh, the, the proposed new dwelling will have a two-car garage. Um, a stormwater management report and plan is required as we're proposing over four hundred square feet of new impervious surface coverage. The increase in pervious surface coverage is one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eighths square feet, uh, which gives me a lot coverage of twenty-five point six and the ordinance allows thirty-six percent. So we're not asking for any lot coverage, uh, variance and we're not even close to exceeding the maximum lot coverage that is allowed on the property. Uh, but we do need to have stormwater management. We will address the increase in impervious surface coverage from stormwater management per the Princeton Small Projects Ordinance, uh, section T one, uh, T ten B three-three-one point one. What we're going to do here is we're going to propose the pervious driveway pavement and pervious walks to meet the regulation requirements. So after we utilize the house, put the house and we have a detached or, or a garage, we have a new access point for the driveway as we come in and get into the driveway. That is going to be all porous pavement and then the walks around the house will also be all porous pavement. And, uh, we provided, uh, uh, calculations, a operation and maintenance manual and demonstrating that we comply with your ordinance. Um, so that's how we're going to handle the stormwater management. It, it does meet the regs. It was submitted as part of this documentation. Uh, we got no comments, which I don't think we get comments during the zoning, but, uh, we believe we comply with the ordinance and the intent of the ordinance. Um, as part of this development, we're knocking down, uh, ten existing trees. Uh, per the Princeton Tree Replacement Ordinance, eighteen trees are required and we're proposing twenty trees. Um, we're providing a screening along the uh, westerly property line and we're also screening along the northern property line and we're also scattering trees throughout the property. Um, we're proposing, um. Leland Cypress and green giant arbor parties along the property lines for screening and we're providing American red bud. Throughout the property and we meet the ordinance requirement for that. Um, as far as the drainage patterns and, uh, in impacts to adjacent property owners. We're basically putting the house exactly where it was before. We're not changing any of the grading around it. There is no. Drainage impacts to the adjacent properties. Um, the prop, uh, the property lot. 34, which is the property closest to the driveway, it has the porous pavement. I pitched the driveway from the property line. Toward our house and then it shoots down the roadway. So no increase or impacts to the adjacent properties. Uh, due to the increased pervious surface coverage for the driveway, um, all the other adjacent properties, which is the two roadways and then. Lot, um. I guess slot 34, uh, do not have any increased impacts. Um. Uh, the engineering plot and architectural plimes, I, I believe, uh, fit into this property seamlessly. It, it's, it's not a major. Um, grading or, or disturbance. Um, the proposed dwelling is located in the same location as the previous dwelling, thus no ecological and environmental change to the property. Um, the existing property is currently served by public sewer, public water, gas, electric and local telephone. And the proposed dwelling will access utilities, uh, utilizing the same connections where as possible. And the local garbage will be collected on a daily, on a weekly basis. So I mean, we, we spent a lot of time on the, the design of this, the stormwater management this. And the stormwater management, which we had to do, we did soil testing, um, to make sure that we had the right separation. Um, and come up with the best, uh, means, practical design, design. That would fit for this property and, and I, I think we came up with a, a, a nice, nice plan. This was the third iteration that we went through before we were. In front of this board. So this is what we finally came up with, which I think is the best fit.
Couple more, uh, things, David, uh, in this next slide, you know, we, we do need that lot area variance. I think on the right here, um. If we have our lot, the one to the right of that, um, that we touch is also undersized, uh, unfortunately. Uh, so not a source of, uh, of, of additional land. Uh, then the, the lot above us, while not undersized, that's the one we reached out. We've got a little picture of the. Letter with the names blacked out of our attempt to, uh, purchase part of it. But also, um, we tried to show, uh, you know, to, to get that thousand square feet with about a hundred feet of, uh. Common lot line, we're, you know, we're looking at about 10 feet into their property. With the 15 foot setback requirement, it's, it seems likely that even if they were interested, uh, that. We wouldn't be able to handle things without perhaps, uh, uh, creating a.
It, it comes exactly. It's 110 feet property line. You have 999, 93 square feet. 110 divided by nine, 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 three, it comes up to be nine feet. You have 19 feet. You're going to create a, a setback variance. So you're, you're either alleviating one, one for us, but then you're creating, uh, a variance on the adjacent lot.
Yeah. So we, while we think it would create a variance condition for them, we, we did ask anyway, because I, I suppose. It would also be a variance to have a not straight lot line between the properties, but, uh, just wanted to cross all our Ts and, and dot our Is. Uh, there, um, uh. David, the next, next piece, I guess we've got the existing house and the, the revised house, existing left revised on the right. So you could. See while we are using some of the foundation to basically keep the part of it. In the same location it is now. I guess you could, you can also see where the garage, which currently is. We'll say front facing or second front facing in a, in a way that the neighborhood character does not permit. Uh, is now notched into the conforming location and complying with the, uh. With the neighborhood character rules. Is that, uh? Do I have that right with this one?
You have exactly right. And that's, that's the third iteration that we came up with to, to comply with Derek Bridger's comments and. And going around and, and this actually came out to be, uh, a, a very, uh, nice design architecturally as, as far as engineering comes. We have a nice design that, that fits seamlessly. But then when you look at the architecture, which you're going to get to. Uh, the, the elevations have just really came out even better from what we had originally.
Um, I think just one last thing for you, just to point out, you know, that the garage location with rear facing and. Recessed from the front line of the home by eight feet complies with the, um. Neighborhood character rules for corner lot garages, uh, whereas the, the current home. Definitely does not. So not only are we pulling part of that, uh. Current house that's in the front yard setback back, but we're, we're turning the, a non-compliant garage situation into a, to a compliant one.
Correct.
Um, then, uh, we've got the next slide, I guess 11 shows the neighborhood view. Um, the. Interesting, you know, there, there's no different rules for prevailing setback when a road is not straight, but it is kind of hard to. To visualize the, the patterns when it's curved on a, on a corner like this. So the, I guess we. We're trying to show that the, the two homes next door, um, that create the prevailing setback actually are. Uh, closer, at least the one next door is closer to the street than, than we propose to be in both have, um, uh. Protruding garages where we will be, uh, not only further back from the street, but also having the garage re. Uh, recessed further back even than the part that we're measuring from it. Uh, the, the house next door, for example, has a, uh. A front facing garage that protrudes, um, and creates a setback situation. Will be further back from that entirely and then the garage further back than that. So with that, before we move to our architect, um, I guess I'll ask if, uh. David, if you think you've missed anything and if not, uh, uh, if, if, uh, border professionals have any questions for our engineer.
I have a question. It would be both the engineer and the architect, but I'll just, you, you don't have to mention it now. The architect can answer it, but. It's a new house. Why could you, why couldn't you comply with the setback? Why do you need a variance in a new house? So keep that in mind as you move through your presentation.
Thank you. Uh, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll do a combination of, uh, uh, answers of that with, uh, you know, a lot of it is to reuse. I think parts of the home that, that existed, including the foundation, uh, but be able to good reason to, uh, introduce our architect next. Uh, so. Uh, James, if you could.
May I ask a question though, before you move on? I think it fits in here.
Sure.
Um, I, I think I'm just, am I? Am I right that the new house? I, I drove by it today and I was looking at the trees partly because I saw two sentences that didn't quite seem to. Make sense to me. One was the second paragraph, the proposed dwelling is being located in the same vicinity as the existing dwelling, thus. No ecological and or environmental change to the property. Um, I always kind of keep an eye out for what's going on with the trees. Um, so, and I don't think these are legal terms. So the sentence that starts the, the next paragraph, which says. And existing trees will be removed. Seems to be in conflict with that previous sentence. I worried, I'm less worried now because I was worried about. Those large trees, um, amazingly tall trees, like I, I, the pine trees that are at the corner. Uh, I don't know which corner I, to call it, but, um.
It's, it's the rear of that, of the existing house.
Okay, yeah. And, um, it looks to me, am I right? It looks like the new house, even though you're, you say it's on the same footprint. It looks like it's. It's pulled back, so it's not going to be as close. Is that correct?
I don't think that's correct. Hold on. I believe they're both abutting the property, uh, they're, they're both abutting the 15 foot yard setback.
No, but I'm, I'm talking about where they, it looks to me in this. Existing conditions drawing, yeah. I mean, do you, it looks like those three, they look like spiders, but those represent the trees are.
Right.
Are touching, practically touching the house and in the, in the sec, in the picture that you're pointing, putting the arrow on right now. It's just though the ones that are, I, now I'm trying to look at it, point with my finger, but it does no good. Um, there are two that are like towards the lakeside that actually seem like there's a little bit of breathing room there.
Right. There must be a notch. I mean, that would be more for the architect, but yeah, he might have notched the.
Okay, sorry, I'm.
But those, those trees are concerned for, for our, you know, our, our house as well as the. The adjacent house. They're, 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 they gotta be 40 feet tall. I mean, they're getting to the, their, their end of their, um, lifespan, in my opinion, because they're getting so big. Um, and there'll be a detriment to our house as well as the adjacent house.
So you are going to be removing those trees?
Yes.
Oh, I don't see where that's marked.
Um, if, if you looked at the plans, they're, my plans, I mean, as opposed to these slides, my plans do have, uh, an X through them. Um.
I guess maybe I did see that earlier, which concerned me. And then when I was looking at these, I thought, oh, I was wrong.
No, they're, they're slated to be moved because I think they're too big. I mean, uh, obviously we're not putting, we're not going to affect it.
You're an engineer. Have you consulted with an arborist?
I did not consult with an arborist, no.
So I would, I guess I would go back to my original statement, which is I'm not sure what is meant by the sentence. There are no ecological and or environmental change. Those are pretty significant changes.
Um, I, I think we're, we're mitigating the same trees with, with more amount of trees, um, and we're.
Yeah, but you, you know that there's a, a big difference unless you're planning to tap. Plant.
We're, we're not changing the grading. We're not changing the, you know, most, you know. 65% of the lot. We're just changing the vicinity, the vicinity around the building.
It's an ecological or environmental change unless there's some legal term, uh, definition of that that I don't know, but. I don't think there is, um. I would just, I don't know that this is within our purview, but I would, I would encourage checking with. I know it's not convenient to build near trees and might be hard to keep them alive when they're that close. But I would encourage you to check with somebody whose business it is to know about whether a tree is going to have a longer life. And I mean, there are trees that live 100 years, so I don't know how old those are, but I don't know if you do either.
Uh, that's, that's a, a fair comment and, and, and definitely we can look into that. You know, there's some, with some thought. Into pulling the house back a bit to that, just to avoid them a, a, a bit. I, I think our. Thinking was that that might not be enough, but we'll happy to work with both the towns arborists and, and our team. To see, you know, ultimately these are essentially up against the existing home and I think it was approached with the concern that they were already. At end of life and very close to the existing home, even without altering the home, uh, but. Excellent, you know, very good point. And, and again, happy to work both with the municipal arborist and. Our own team to see what can be done, uh, with those absent, you know, not having, you know, certainly a house there, but, uh. But ultimately that there, um, some effort was made, uh, for, for different reasons. It sounds like to. To notch the front of the revised home, at least in that corner away from two of those trees. Uh, so there may be a little bit more room in the after condition than there is currently for them. Uh, but that's certainly something we can look at and, and work with the, the towns arborist and our own, our own team, uh, on to see what. Um, whether there should be and, and then, and how they could be, um, maintained.
Good. Thanks.
So with that, if there's something else for our engineer, um, happy to, uh, ask our architect, uh, James. Tonight to, uh, um, introduce himself and, uh, give the board the benefit of, of, uh, his credentials. So I can have you entered as an expert this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I appeared in front of this board, uh, a number of years ago for the adjacent property. Uh, but, uh, to remind you, uh, I'm a graduate of Cooper Union in New York City in 1977. Bachelor of Architecture. I was licensed in, uh, New York State in 81 and in New Jersey in 83. I've been operating my own business since 1984, so we're 40 years into, uh. Uh, my own business. You're currently licensed in New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
I think unless any of the board members have any question, I think we would accept you as an expert.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so James, um, uh, a couple of things, uh, questions kind of, uh, load up in, in advance here, but I guess we're. You know, we, we've got a couple of slides of your, of the, uh. Uh, elevations of the front and in this case the side, uh, two things kind of want to talk about. One, um, uh, you know, at the bottom left with the front. Elevation, uh, and just, just notes to make sure you get to. I think that front right corner where there's, you know, an existing, uh. Part of the current home that will remain essentially a one story part that is closest to the tree that we were just talking about with Ms. Coulson. Um, and so the, you know, design choices and kind of reuse of, of that part of the building, uh, I think is of particular interest and then. Um, uh, the top right is that side profile facing the side street where, uh, part of, uh. Part of the existing home and foundation, I guess, would be reused and kept in place, uh, but the other parts. Stepped back. So if we, you know, as you're taking us through design, uh, I know the board was interested in those, those two, uh, those two pieces of things.
All right. Uh. As Mr. Kennedy said, these are the two street views. The primary one on the lower part of the page is what's facing. The lake across the street. Um, as you can see, it has, uh. Lots of windows for the view of the lake. It has two external balconies on the second level. Uh, so that you can come outside and look across the street at the water. Uh, it has a, uh, a covered porch in the center between the two, uh, gable bays that come forward. And then the main entrance is to the right. Uh, looking on the side, uh, the corner of the building has yet even more windows. For the obvious purpose of looking at the lake across the street and, uh. As you can see by the shadows of what's projected there, that, that whole rear wing of the building is pushed back to. Conform to the, uh, the, the side street, uh, requirements. But the, the reason the other thing is where it is, is because we're trying to reuse the existing foundation underneath there. These are the other two, uh, elevations. Uh, the larger one is the rear of the building that shows the, uh, two car garage door. Facing the rear yard, not facing the street. Uh, there's, uh, big sliding glass doors that come out to a, a deck, a rear deck in the back of the house. Uh, the other elevation is the, uh, the north side facing the neighbor where the big trees are at currently. Uh, you can see the one story part, uh, on the lower section and then the house steps back. Uh, to, to rise up to its, uh, full 34 feet height.
Now, um, on, on the left side, this is the one story section that is, uh, closest to the, those trees that, uh, Ms. Coulson was, was asking about before. Will, will, uh, parts of this foundation be reused or, uh, in that area?
Yeah, that, that's part of the way the, the building is now, correct?
So ultimately, um, it. Would you expect there to be significant additional, you know, disturbance to the root area that I suppose is either already disturbed or already. Encumbered with basement and, and house there?
Uh, no, it's, you know, it's, they're up against the same, uh, they'll be up against the same wall. Uh, but obviously the bigger the tree, the bigger the root system. So.
Okay. Um. But in that area, there's not significant expansion or.
No, it's, it's.
Being done. Okay.
Correct.
Uh, and I guess the same question on, on the right side, um, uh, the intention is to reuse at least a portion of the existing foundation. In, uh, that location where the home is now.
Correct.
And, uh, from a design perspective, that if you were to abandon that essentially, um. What would there be other design impacts to that, particularly with the garage that would have to be even further, uh, pulled into the, uh. You know, with challenges in designing a neighborhood character. pulled into the, you know, challenges in designing a neighborhood character compliant garage on a corner lot at that point?
I'm 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 missing your question. If if we made the whole house conform to the setback, is that what you're asking?
But the would that have implications in the way you've designed the garage? Would that have to be further pulled back in order to be compliant? This this garage is setback eight feet from that front line.
Yeah, no, if we, you know, I mean, the whole design would have to be altered if if we lost that part of the floor plan. It would it would shake up, you know, everything the way the building is designed at the moment. So it's it's hard for me to just say, you know, slice off that piece of salami, but, you know, it it would, you'd have to come up with a whole new design, basically.
Any other details about the homes design? I know you're, I'm so you're saying trying to maximize the view of the of the lake, certainly from.
Right, I think the house, the way it's designed, takes full advantage of the corner sight and the, you know, spectacular view that it has of the nice lake and the the, you know, boats going by.
Before I open up to questions, any other pieces from an architecture perspective you'd like to share?
Uh, no.
All right, so certainly to, you know, we we tried to answer some of the previewed questions, but certainly happy to answer any other questions to the board or your professionals behalf, Mr. Chairman.
Can you show the front?
Any questions?
You show the front elevation again?
There it is.
What is the design feature in those gables? Is that vertical?
Oh, it's 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 a hardy, a hardy product that's like, you know, that imitates Borden Batten.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then, you know, the horizontal siding is other hardy products that come in a variety of nice colors and everything.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do, well, let's finish and then I'll ask my question. Aren't you, Mr. Kennedy, any other witnesses?
Yes, our next witness would be our planner. Matt, if you could, Matt Flynn could unmute yourself and and introduce yourself to the board.
Sorry about that, sorry about the delay there. Good evening.
Matt, if you could briefly give the board the benefit of your background and and credentials as a planner?
Sure, my education comes from Rutgers University. I have my master's degree in planning and public policy. I have my professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as the national licenser, which is the AICP license. I've testified before over a hundred boards across the state. I think this is my first time to have the privilege to testify here, though.
I I'm comfortable with your credentials, if any, unless any of the other board members have a concern.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I guess your planning testimony, I know you, your team has some drone capabilities. We have a couple of photos that you guys are responsible for, but perhaps let me know which what you'd like me to show as you're taking us through the the variance testimony. But I believe this slide fourteen is a aerial photo that your team was able to to get.
Correct, and I think just before I go through those, if we could go back to the, I think it was what, two slides, three slides? Hold on a second. Right before the elevations, the aerial map with the with the parcels shown, can we just go back to that? I don't know. There we go.
This one here?
Yeah. Yeah, and am I zoomed in? Okay. Yeah, so I just wanted to leave this on the screen just by way of background while I go over sort of the 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 overview of the parcel real quick here. Again, we are talking about one tax lot that is very slightly undersized per zoning. We're talking about a lot that's twenty thousand seven hundred eighty-seven square feet. We're just about one thousand square feet short of the zoning minimum of twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty square feet. It's not a noticeable, it's not a noticeable difference on the ground. Again, this is a corner lot, it's a highly visible lot, and by way of this being a corner lot, there is exaggerated frontage both along Shady Brook and and Princeton Princeton Kingston Road there. We are in the R five zone. We are talking about a permitted use. It's an existing permitted use. Again, it's a replacement in kind from a use perspective, replacing a an existing permitted use with a proposed permitted use in the zone. As was mentioned, we are requesting two variances. Both are existing conditions. Lot area, like I mentioned, that's an existing condition. We're not changing the lot lines. We're simply redeveloping the home. And then front setback, we're proposing thirty point one feet, whereas thirty-eight point five feet is required. Again, it's a it's a prevailing requirement there. We have to look at the other homes along the street here. But again, it is an improvement over the thirty point zero eight feet that's existing. So we are actually pulling that that front setback further back, albeit slightly, but again, not exacerbating any existing nonconforming conditions. So with that, I guess we can go through those drone shots. Yeah, so here we're looking at obviously the property on the corner of Shady Brook and Princeton Kingston. The front yard that we see in the front of the screen here is Princeton Kingston Road frontage right across the street from from Lake Carnegie there. The front setback you're looking at here is eighty-nine point seven five feet, which is essentially what we have right next door. So we have nice compatibility there, which obviously is nice and and it meets the intent of the zoning to have this setbacks that meet the the prevailing neighborhood. So if we could just go to the next one there, we get the view of the lake right across the street. As was noted by the architect, one of the nice improvements of this home is that we do get these nice windows along the front of the property to give the residents a nice view of that lake. I'll go to the next slide. This is just a simple aerial image, top down. We see that nonconforming front setback along Shady Brook. But as was noted, this is not going to necessarily stand out in the context of what we see elsewhere along Shady Brook. In fact, the home directly next to us is slightly closer to the street. So again, it's not going to stand out in terms of being too close, and we do have that eighty-nine feet along Princeton Kingston. So in terms of light air, open space, this is not, this doesn't really constitute overdevelopment. It's not going to appear crammed in in the context of everything that's around it. We do have some nice space built in.
And Matt, just from from this view, the back portion of this property that is currently a an L shape in the new configuration, that part will actually be pulled back into a compliant location, whereas now it's not compliant. Is that?
Correct, yes, yeah, as was noted by by the prior witnesses, that's that's correct. Eliminating that nonconforming condition of the front-facing garage, which is another positive, which I'll get into the positive criteria in just a moment. So I think there's one more, or am I? No, that's it. Okay, so just to tie all that into the statutory criteria, again, we're not requesting any D variances. This is two existing C variances. I think we can look to both the C two test as well as the C one test. So just to start with the C two test, it's a balancing test. We look at the benefits of the application as a whole and whether they outweigh the any potential detriments caused by these variances. So to do so, we look at the municipal land use law, which sets forth some nice criteria in terms of the purposes of zoning that that all all good zoning is is meant to promote. So purpose A, promotion of the general welfare. Again, this is replacement in kinds from a use perspective. We're not proposing anything that's going to stand out. We're not proposing any nonpermitted uses. We're not exacerbating any setback requirements. In fact, like counsel just noted, it is actually an improvement in some respects. Purpose G, variety of uses in appropriate locations. Again, permitted use in the zone, making it more comfortable, more attractive, more desirable, again, without triggering any new variance relief. I think that's really at the core of of good planning, getting a nice improvement of the site while while keeping it within the confines of of what's there and within the and respecting the the zoning. Purpose I is desirable visual environment. Again, this is going to be an attractive upgrade. We do have some nice landscaping, which we can see on the screen here that's proposed. We are keeping the dwelling in the safe, excuse me, the same vicinity as the existing dwelling, really respecting that existing foundation, increasing that front setback and eliminating that front-facing garage condition, which is in line with that neighborhood characteristic requirement of the of the zoning code. And finally, purpose M of the MLUL is efficient use of land. I'll get to this in a moment, but we are substantially compliant in all of those other respects that that the zoning code sets forth in terms of coverage, height, FAR, and setbacks. So with that, the negative criteria, we look to whether these variances are going to have a substantial detriment to the public or to the zone. I think by virtue of all that testimony on the record in terms of public impacts, this really is not going to stand out as being inappropriate in terms of the neighborhood context, in terms of what we would expect here per zoning. In terms of the the zone impacts, again, we comply with all of the dimensional requirements aside from lot area. We have the lot width, depth, as well as frontages. Like I said, the front setback to Princeton Kingston Road is compliant at eighty-nine point seven feet. The rear setback is thirty-nine point three feet. We only are required to have fifteen feet. So that's over double that rear rear setback requirement, compliant in terms of side setback, building height. There's even a requirement of building height to setback ratio, FAR, parking setbacks. And finally, impervious coverage, we're at about seventy percent of what we would be allowed in terms of coverage. So like I said, this is not going to constitute overdevelopment of the site, even though we do have this this relatively minor front setback condition. I think by virtue of compliance with all these other requirements, this really does meet the intent of of zoning to have a a nice spacious lot without a excessively large building or excessive coverage or things of that nature. So with that, I would say the C two balancing test is met here. I think we can also look to the C one hardship test, where the relief relates to the unique conditions of the land itself and the development lawfully existing thereon and not the development per se. The building position is driven by the existing foundations. We heard testimony that the applicant has made an offer to to acquire some additional land, but we also did hear how that might not be the most practical or desirable option anyway. And again, the front setback does basically match the existing setback on the property, and it's not going to stand out when we look at the front setback next door on Shady Brook. So with that, I would say from a massing standpoint, a scale standpoint, a use standpoint, this really is an appropriate application. I keep saying it's not going to stand out when you walk past this site. It's not going to look as if it's overdevelopment or or things of that nature. So with that, I think we satisfy both the C one test and the C two test. The applicant really needs to only meet one of those, but this application does have the benefit of of meeting both. So all said, this is a a positive application, a positive redevelopment of the site, and it's going to contribute to the aesthetics of the neighborhood as a whole. Of course, we do have that lake across the street, and I think that this proposed home is going to be a nice amenity, and it's it's going to be a more desirable home in in consideration of that lake right across the street. So unless there's any questions, that's or any redirect, that's really all I have from the planning testimony.
Thank you, Matt. Certainly happy to have our planner answer any questions and just following that, I'll note, I'd like to bring back our our owner back one more time because there's a little bit more about the trees than I realized when we were answering that question, and I'd like to return to that subject. But, Mr. Chairman, if if anyone has the, you, your board members or professionals have any questions for our planner, happy to entertain.
Board members, is are there anyone? Is there anyone who would like to question the plan?
Yeah, I just have a question about the, I noticed that there's essentially a tri, what looks like a triangular chunk at the corner that was shaved off, and I'm wondering if that wasn't there, how much would it add to the area? Would that make it compliant?
I'll I'll let our engineer regroup on that, but the the lot directly next door is essentially the same size minus that corner triangle and is also noncompliant. So I believe that, at least in our trying to figure out where we could borrow property from or or beg or or buy it, that was not a an option. And they're essentially the same size minus that corner, so they're undersized even with squared off. David, do I do I think I got that right?
Correct, yes. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
If there's no other question, I would like to bring our homeowner back. Cherish, briefly, if it's all right for a for a follow-up question, because it it turns out there had been some discussions with the arborist about those trees, and I'd like to let him speak to that if if that's all right. Cherish, if you could, I know both you and your your soon-to-be neighbor had some concerns about that tree over the years, and and you you have been talking with the tailor, the the towns' arborist on that?
Yeah, that's right. I think right now it's leaning, and if a good storm comes, it's it could be a very good chance that it can actually fall on this house or that house, depending on whichever way the wind blows. But that's definitely a concern because it's it doesn't look really healthy. It's actually leaning already. And we did, we did consult with the town arborist on that.
And he told you that it was a danger?
Yeah, sorry.
So one of them is?
I think there are two of them together. If I'm not mistaken, yeah.
They're both leaning?
Yeah.
So he told you that both of them are a danger of danger falling?
That's right.
But will you continue to work with him to find the best solution for for these trees in the house?
And if you look at the aerial photo, you can see that how it's actually slanted a little bit. The aerial photo has somebody, you can see that, how they set up the tree. You see like it's already, you see the line of the tree? Yeah, you see that? Yeah.
It's, I, you know, I I can't see it from this picture, honestly.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Cher.
Noticed it today, but I didn't walk around, I didn't walk around. I just noticed how big they were.
Yeah.
But I I can't say one way or the other based on what I saw today.
Yeah, I mean, we we would also love to keep it. It's a beautiful tree. It's just that there's a risk with the wind, and it's always a threat. That's that's why, like, you have to make the decisions. It's a beautiful tree.
You won't get another one like that for a number of years, that's for sure.
Oh, no, that's.
With that, that's all we have in our our case in chief, unless there's any other questions for any of our witnesses, happy to provide a quick summary, but again, make everybody available for any any questions that the the board may have.
I still didn't get an answer on the why why the variances was requested when in fact this is a new home. The side yard setback variance. If you are, at least, and again, I I I'm not totally against the thirty feet, but I guess the question is you are changing the foundation. So the argument that you're keeping the foundation the same isn't really applicable.
I I guess I'll ask our architect to explain again. I what what I had heard was that the we are reusing that foundation. I guess would it, is is it physically impossible to abandon it entirely and and build something completely different? No, I don't know if that's the standard either, but but ultimately, the desire is to reuse at the current location, some of the existing foundation, and then to mitigate from the current condition by pulling much of that line of the existing house back, particularly so that the a compliant garage could be constructed where currently it is both in the setback and because it is flush. both in the setback and because it is flush with the front line of the house, non-compliant. So by pulling that eight feet back, not only are we taking some of the existing house out of the setback, but creating, removing a variance condition on how the garage was arranged. James, anything you want to add to that particularly about the you know, benefit of the reuse of the foundation, or maybe better explain how than I can understand how you know, the difference between, you know, using what's there and reconstructing something?
Well, we are going to reconstruct it because the existing garage notches into what becomes our floor plan of the house. So that, you know, a new foundation wall will have to be installed there.
At the garage location, though, right?
At the, at that garage location, right. And then, you know, there's, obviously there's more new foundations being installed. So like I said, if it's it just seemed at the, at the way we designed it that that the asking for a variance, as the planner just testified, really is, you know, negligible given the context of the curved neighborhood and the existing buildings next to us and the existing buildings across the street. To me, the variance is, is not a bad thing, given, given the looks and what this house could look like. If you diminish the width of the house, it would affect the proportions entirely. Like I said, I'd have to redesign the entire building if that was the case.
And perhaps, Matt, if you could just remind the board, you know, for the C two variance, it is a balancing of positives and negatives, and I'm not asking to re-go through that, but it's, it's not necessarily is it impossible to do, but you know, what's the benefit versus the downside from the zone plan perspective? And maybe, and I ask briefly.
Correct, yeah. And we do have a case law out there. It's known as the Poland case, which establishes that we need not look at each individual variance and say, is this variance a benefit? Is this it's really, we look at the application as a whole and determine whether the overall project constitutes an improvement over the existing.
And by lessening the existing variance condition, both from the garage location and orientation and lack of setback, and the lesser amount of non-conforming setback from the revised house that meets that test?
Absolutely. Yeah. And then obviously, all that, everything I said about the negative criteria, it's not going to be substantially detrimental either. So that's the other side.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
So just in summary, you know, I want to thank the board for your time here tonight. This family is very excited to you know, move forward with their, with their revised home here, you know, from a traditional hardship perspective of the lot area. There's really not much more to say there. We did our, you know, we've asked, and there's not interest, and we also think that we might not have needed to ask because it might, we likely would create a variance condition, and then on the other lot, it's just not an option to gain property without making them more non-conforming. I think you've heard what we're attempting to do on the existing side yard setback, lessing the amount of frontage that's non-conforming from what's existing, pulling the garage, the current front-facing garage back to conform both with the setback and with the additional eight-foot requirement behind the front line of the house that's required under Princeton's code. To redesign it in a different way would likely bring it closer to the neighbor, eat up more of the backyard, and because that eight-foot additional requirement from the front, from that side of the home, you know, to have a garage that's not on a corner lot, going to eat up the entire backyard with driveway and garage does have some additional limitations. So the design chosen, we feel, has positives from the existing condition considerably, but benefits from not essentially going all the way to conforming because of the alternatives that would have to happen with the garage location and, you know, then likely the lack of backyard and a lot that's shaped this way with such a large front setback in the way that the corner lot garage requirements require further setback. So with that, much appreciated your, your, your time here tonight and consideration.
Okay, so, board members, are there any questions of the owners, the owners' witnesses, Mr. Kennedy, before we open this up to public comment? Okay, hearing done. We'll open the hearing up to the public. Claudia, has anyone indicated that they'd like to speak on this application?
One second, I see a hand. Okay, he's on. BJ?
Yeah, hi.
We can't see you, sir.
Oh, I don't have my video on. I just need a minute. Okay, can you guys see me now?
We can. Sir, if you're comfortable, can you give us your address?
Yeah, I'm the neighbor for this property. My name is Vijay Kethiradi. The property address is eight-eight-four Princeton Kingston Road.
Thank you very much, and we're just going to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm? Any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I heard somebody talking about the trees. I, previously I requested the old owner because like there are three trees in the corner of that property. One tree is leaning towards their property and two trees are leaning towards my property. And I requested the old owner like a couple of times. They said they would take them down, but they could not do it actually. So now I'm requesting the new owner also like to consider to take them down. They're like too dangerous because like they're too close to the property and they're leaning towards my house also.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Claudia, anyone else indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of the application?
I see no more hands.
Okay. Give it a second here and see if anybody else decides they'd like to speak. All right, I guess we don't have anyone else, so we'll close the hearing to the public. Mr. Kennedy, before we go into executive session, would you like to comment for him?
Again, thank you so much, and actually very much appreciate the thoughts about the trees. I know that's something we looked into, but wasn't on the tip of our tongue, and again, certainly we want to do what's best. You heard from the owner that they're they'd love to keep these if they can, but they have some concerns and will certainly comply with and work with the arborist to make sure the the right thing happens here if they can be saved, but if not, the compliance of the ordinance, certainly. Again, you heard about the classic, we wish we could do something, but we can't about the lot area. And you heard, you know, unusually to have a planner here, but we want to cross all our Ts and dot our Is, make sure that the C two balancing standard, what was met for our plan to to reuse part of the foundation and lessen the existing non-conformity for the setback, both by reducing the frontage that is applicable to that, fixing the garage situation, you know, as well as testimony about the adjacent houses which are, while prevailing, is prevailing, the immediately adjacent and closer houses on a curved street are quite, are closer essentially than we propose to be. So our impact, both to what the eye sees on this stretch of street, is what the eye is used to seeing, though less so because we are lessening the existing non-conformity, but also in keeping with what the other neighboring houses have, with the exception that we will be the two immediately adjacent houses have the non-conforming front protruding garages will be eliminating that problem, that non-conformity from this house as it's rebuilt. So again, thank you so much for your time tonight and very much appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, board members, let's discuss this. Comments, questions?
Steve, I guess I'd like to know what you think about the answer about why they're not going to have new construction within the zoning code.
Well, okay, I, in my opinion, they didn't answer it. But notwithstanding that, quite frankly, I feel that the thirty-foot setback, looking at the placement of the house, the adjacent house, I think it's, although it doesn't conform, I think it provides a, a good amount of open space between the house and the street. And I do think that the design of the house will present nicely on the street and proportionally it does look good, but, but I don't think the, I don't think in this, they didn't, in my opinion, they didn't answer the question. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't the only one who thought that.
Yeah, you were correct, yeah. Okay, board members, any other questions or comments?
I remember when we approved the house next door a couple of years ago. I, I remember when we approved the house next door, when they came for us. And I think this house complements that house very nicely. I agree with you, Steve. I think it's, you know, setback is what it is, but it's not a detriment to the neighborhood, and I think, you know, I approve those.
Yeah, I agree. It's, the fact that they've turned the garage is a greater positive than, you know, a setback deviation.
Yeah.
So having heard more about the concerns about the trees, I'm wondering if it might be nonetheless wise for us to like add to the motion, I'm not quite sure how to word it, just a firm requirement to have something, a statement from the arborist, because once, if those trees are taken down, there won't really be any way to, in the future, when somebody else says, well, this tree's leaning, we won't really be able to say that, you know, we won't be able to prove that the arborist said, no, this is a danger. I don't know if we're putting him on a spot that he's not going to be willing to be put on, but I'm just thinking, I don't always think in terms of precedent, but I think this keeps, it does keep coming up, and it's easy to say that looks, you know, it's, I, what we first heard was that it was the end of life. Now it's leaning. And
But, you know.
I mean, it could, one could be, say that that's related, but I'm just saying it might be good to have something on the record. If that's.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I'm trying to figure out how we would do that because we don't have it now. Yes, Derek?
Just for the board's education, any application like this requires engineering review, and in part of that review, Dan Weissman, the municipal land use engineer, goes out with the Taylor Saputa, the arborist, and they look at the site. So part of his review is, you know, he's not trying to get rid of healthy trees, so if he's, he's out on maternity leave, I believe to the end of the month, but there is a replacement arborist in, so depending on when that happens, somebody's going to look at these trees and review the rationale for taking them down. And so there is some review, but.
That'll be in the record some, somehow. It would be, but in, in any case, is that usual?
Correct, yeah, it's, it's, it happens a lot, like with the drip lines of trees and stuff, so that we're constantly going back and forth with the applicants to to keep as much canopy as we can, but at the same time, people have a right to build the house, but it's, you know, it's an excellent point that you raised, and it's, they are mature trees, and they will be looked at by the engineer and the arborist as part of that process, but excellent.
Eric, so your thought is that there's no need to create a condition in the approval for consultation with the arborist to confirm that?
I mean, you could put, they're going to do it anyway. It doesn't hurt to put it in there. They it's part of the process. It can be spelled out. It's going to happen anyway, so it doesn't, it doesn't hurt if you put it in there that it's part of the review process. The arborist will look at the trees to be removed.
And to determine if they're healthy or whether it's appropriate to.
And I mean, also, he's going to look in, you know, if the development's going to kill the tree in three or four years, then he's going to put that out there. But, so, yeah, I mean, whatever the board's pleasure is, I think it's, it's fine to put something in there to that effect.
Are you comfortable with that, Eve?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so that will be included in our resolution. So well, if somebody'd like to make, if there are any more questions, if someone would like to make a motion one way or the other.
I'll move approval of it as a C two, please.
Thank you. What about the condition of?
And the condition that the arborist reviews this. I'm not feel strongly about how much we have to specify what the arborist looks at.
No, but the arborist's opinion will be in the decision whether the trees stay or go.
Yeah, within the power of the arborist.
Yes, exactly.
And the, and the existing code.
Right.
Yeah.
I second it.
Okay, Karen, are you comfortable putting words to that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Okay, if there are no other comments, Claudia, can you please call a roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman, Chairman Cohen, sorry.
Thank you, yes. Good luck with your house. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can I take five?
Yes, we can.
Ryan, who do I need to bring over?
A person named Jason and Catherine Knight, just two people.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. We'll reconvene at nine oh five. Okay, it's nine o'clock. We'll reconvene at nine oh five. Okay, it's uh, nine oh five. Um, we're back in session. Okay, um. Our next case is um. KC twenty-four dash five seventy-three, fifty-eight Cleveland Lane Block. Five point oh one lot eleven in the R one B zone. Uh, Karen, is the noticing in order?
Yes, the notices are in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, Claudia, you're muted. Claudia?
Yes, I'm here.
Are we recording again, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um. Mr. Bridger, can you summarize your memo for us?
Yes, sir, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Peter Khan and Karen House are the owners and the applicants. Um, they own fifty-eight Cleveland. Lane, they are seeking C one and C two variances to permit construction of a second floor accessory dwelling unit addition. To a one and a half story detached four car garage with an existing apartment. In exception to the required setback for an ADU located on a corner. Subjects located in the R one zone in the former Princeton borough. Subjects not complying with the respect to the maximum impervious coverage on site, the uh. Maximum amount for this lot area is nineteen and a half and the existing is twenty-seven point five. And it's not compliant with the required accessory structure setback, uh, which is. Uh, seventy-one point eight three feet, um, and the existing is twenty-six point seven five. The applicant is proposing to remove the half story of the existing four car garage apartment. Um, the existing apartment will be removed and a new second story of approximately a nineteen hundred square foot ADU will be. Which will be comprised of three habitable rooms will be constructed. Two covered porches are proposed with the ADU, a new storage room not associated with the ADU will be constructed. And an old apartment kitchen located adjacent to the garage will be converted to storage. The ADU requires one parking space, which will be located in the parking area in front of the garage. The size of the ADU is less than the maximum permitted twenty-five percent FAR of the principal dwelling. Uh, section ten B two sixty-six point two C requires accessory structures on a corner lot. Be stepped back from any property lying along a street, a minimum of five feet from the facade of the principal dwelling facing said street. Or the minimum required side yard setback, whichever is greater. The required side yard setback in this case is twenty feet where. As the required setback five feet from the facade of the principal building is seventy-one point eight three feet. Um, the variance requested in this case, um, the requirement seventy-one point eight three for that side yard and the proposal is twenty-six point seven five. And they've requested criteria or consideration under both the C one and the C two criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Bridger? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
Right, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Bridger and uh. Chairman, uh, again, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee here for the homeowner applicants, uh. Peter Khan and Karen House, uh, and their son Jason, actually, uh, we'll have that here for them in a second. Uh, ultimately, this is a very unique and very large lot with a a quite a significant home on it. As you'll see, this could almost be four conforming lots with significant houses and and ADUs on them. Uh, there's a lot of um, uh, things that this could be, uh, but really what what you'll hear is that this is a uh, an existing garage. Uh, with an existing apartment, uh, the caretaker for the house actually retired recently, um, and and moved on and the time has come to. Kind of modernize it, uh, to uh, keep it in its existing condition, but uh. Uh, I'll say expand it a bit, but what's a half story turned into kind of a a full story uh, above the garage and and set it up for. Uh, the couple's son to live, uh, and and set up a kind of. Turnings over for the to the next generation, allowing uh, Peter and Karen to to stay on the property uh, longer with some help from from family. And uh, set up the next part of their lives. Uh, technically, uh, a variance is needed because the existing garage and apartment building um, is. Within this unusually large setback, and as Mr. Bridger said, that is set. By the uh, a function of where the house is plus five feet, uh, so uh. If a new home were built or a new ADU or a lot of different things happening here, you know, it's not the prevailing setback, which is much closer. Uh, to to the street and we'll show you these things, but ultimately this variance is is needed because. They want to reuse the existing apartment, uh, and um. And carriage house or garage, uh, as as an ADU. Uh, the house is uh, nonconforming as to. Coverage as well, but as part of the project, we've been removing quite a bit, so there will be a net reduction in coverage as part of. This project. Um, I I see uh, Jason on, I don't see your camera on, so if if you can hear me, uh. Peter, Jason, uh, there we are. Now I see you. Um, uh, we'll have two uh, witnesses tonight. Our our architect Kathy Knight and then uh, uh. Uh, Peter Khan, uh, possibly Jason, so perhaps if we can have them all sworn in uh, at once now, uh, we could, we could start our presentation.
One second, please. Um. Claudia, Harland, uh, Harland's not visible, nor is it Mike. There you go. Okay, you're there. I didn't know if you were there.
You're muted, Harland.
I apologize, I I didn't turn myself back on when I got back from break. Sorry.
It's fine. It's okay. Just wanted to make sure you were well. Okay, uh, please continue.
Right, uh, so if if we could, I guess, uh, swearing, uh, Kathy, uh, Peter and and Jason.
All right, you're all muted, so if you could unmute yourselves. Thank you, so Mr. Khan. And Jason Khan and Ms. Knight, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do. I do.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so, uh, Peter, if you could introduce yourself, uh, to the board and, uh, you know, uh, let them know what, uh, what your. Needs are with this project and and allowing it to be uh, converted for your family's use.
Thank you, Ryan. Um, so I am Peter Khan. Um, my wife and I are the. Owners at this point of the property. She is in California at a funeral. Uh, but Jason, our son, is sitting next to me. Um, I grew up in Princeton. Um, I have lived most of my life here. I went through the public school system and my wife and I have lived at this fifty-eight Cleveland Lane. Property for thirty-five years now. We are very fortunate to live in, as Ryan kind of described it. In a very large and lovely property fairly near the center of Princeton. And we are very intent on retaining its unique character. So the plan, as as Ryan touched on, is to convert a dark and pretty dingy. Apartment over the garage into a much brighter and somewhat more modern ADU. Consistent with the look of the overall property. The current garage apartment was occupied by thirty for thirty years. Uh, by a caretaker, a bachelor. Um, he retired recently and moved. So that gives us the opportunity to improve and modernize the structure. For Jason and his wife and four-year-old son. Again, Ryan kind of touched on this, but I mean, as my wife moves further into her seventies and. I move further into my eighties, it will obviously be helpful and comforting. To have Jason and his family close to us. Helping with everything from taking out the recycling to helping me manage a computer. Above all, providing companionship. So this ADU plan of ours. Is very much all in the family and we hope you will appreciate that and we thank you for your consideration.
Peter, thank you so much. Um. Uh, a couple of just follow-up questions. I know you've uh, met with many of your neighbors and um, uh, you know. Because this is your project for you and your family, took some extra care to make sure they all knew what you were doing. Um, and and took some extra effort to talk with them. Uh, any concerns raised by anyone that you uh, talked with or um, or approached about the project?
Uh, no, not at all.
Thank you. Um, and uh, don't, I have a few follow-up questions, but uh, perhaps we could start our presentation if it's all right to. We've got one uh, slideshow, I believe it's gonna be eighteen slides that we'd like to mark as our our one exhibit this evening, if that's all right.
Sure.
And hopefully I'll push the right combination of buttons this time and not start uh, talking without actually sharing my screen. Hopefully that uh. Uh, that worked. Uh, Peter, uh, a first couple of slides, I'll I'll ask you about uh. Uh, just to orient uh, the board, though I know they're all familiar with what part of Princeton we're talking about. Uh, this is a zoning map and that uh, red arrow is is pointing to your uh, your property, is that right?
Uh, yes.
All right. Uh, next, uh, we'll kind of zoom in a little bit, uh, uh, from from space satellite view to to kind of find where you are in Princeton again. Blue outline and green pin and red arrow is uh, your your property?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh. Next, uh, slide four shows the the neighborhood view, so that's your home uh, in. Blue, uh, with uh, Cleveland Lane uh, curving around from kind of left to right and then Library Place. Bottom right to to top center showing your corner, is that right?
Yes.
And I'll I'll just note that the kind of pattern here, uh, your lot is uh, considerably larger than than most of your neighbors, uh. And and quite unique, uh, I'm sure in the in that regard, uh, um, is that, is that your, your take on the neighborhood?
Uh, yes, and it has a a large number of trees and bushes and uh, greenery of all sorts.
And uh, are you looking to alter that in any way?
I think the proposal would. Require us to take down two fairly small trees, but that is two among, I would guess, a hundred trees on the property. And not particularly big ones.
Um, uh, so with that, before we go to our next slide, obviously, our homeowner's not going anywhere, but uh, certainly like to. Uh, invite uh, any any questions before we uh, move on to our architect's testimony.
Board members, any questions of uh, the owner? Or Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you so much. Uh, Peter, Jason, uh, I'll say don't don't go far, but I'm sure you weren't looking to 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 leave anywhere, uh, while we're doing this. Um. Ms. Knight, if you could, uh, give the board briefly the benefit of your credentials and I'll have you accepted as a uh, expert here this evening.
I actually think, uh, Ms. Knight has testified before, so.
Happy to shortstop that. Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so Kathy, I'm gonna step to the next slide, which is really the same as slide four, but uh, with a couple of notes on it. You know, we talked about this lot being uh, unusually sized, uh, uh, this zone requires twenty thousand square feet and we've got almost four times that. And just to put things into perspective, you know, in terms of floor area, while there is a quite a large house here. That could be more than eighteen thousand square feet of of buildable space and, you know, lots of different ways that could be. Whacked up, you know, including if it were subdivided, uh, or or, excuse me, with a new home of fifteen thousand square feet and a. And a thirty-seven hundred square foot ADU, possibly. Uh, three five thousand square foot homes that would probably match quite the the neighborhood well. Uh, but uh, much more intense, each with a twelve hundred fifty square foot ADU, but but here, um. We're using the twenty-five percent rule, uh, been able to to put together uh, an ADU on this property using the existing. Garage. Kathy, maybe on slide six, um, we'll kind of take the board a little bit through some of the. The photos uh, around the site. Um, I guess this is, this is a kind of a side view of of the. The small piece of the existing carriage house that is actually visible uh, from the street, uh, but you can really see the. The screening and and trees that are that are surrounding it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, this is um, this is the view from Library Place. I love this view, but here's what you see of the carriage house, um, it where it is now. Um, at a, at the twenty, um, twenty-six feet from from the road. So you can see it's a difficult to see and the the next view shows down the edge of the property line, the back of the property line. That isn't actually, on the left, that isn't a um, road, it's a driveway to the uh, adjacent home. At first, it looked like a road. And so you're looking down the property, there's quite a nice little um, like open area in the back of the property there, which you can see. And that's actually originally they they uh, brought me to their um, site and we talked about whether we could build a house on that. And um, but right next to it was this beautiful carriage house and we immediately morphed into, well, wait, what's happening with the carriage house? And there was somebody living in there at the time and it just seemed like a very logical approach to consider. Um, upgrading what is there and keeping that beautiful stone carriage house, which you'll, which we'll share you. With you instead of trying to build a new structure on the site.
So here on slide eight, we've got uh, kind of a zoomed in version of the site plan showing, you know, what's there now and. Isn't gonna change and and the location of the existing garage. Maybe we want to take the board briefly through, you know, what's on the site now.
Yep, briefly, um, it is hard to see, uh, particularly the main home from the um, from the the road. But at the bottom of your screen would be Cleveland and on the left side is Library Place. So you're looking at at the bottom is the is the existing um, stone dwelling, kind of Tudor style. And um, just just beautiful. And then the back is the complimentary carriage house. Uh, what you're seeing existing is in blue. Um, and there's a greenhouse on the end of it, which you'll see on the right side, which we're not um, changing at all. And then uh, the proposal is to add to the back of it with a great room and a new screened porch area. Um, the entry to the unit will be, um, they'll come in and they'll park in the front where the parking lot is, yep. And then they'll head up a walkway along the side of it and enter to the backside. And that's required for an ADU. They don't want you having the entrance. Um, on the same side of the principal dwelling's entrance, so we couldn't enter from um, from the kind of the Cleveland side. So we're entering from the from the rear of the property. I think this pretty much shows the same thing. If 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 it wasn't um, for this corner rule, which we're gonna talk about in the next slide. You could see where the setback line would be on the left in in black. Yep, that's what it would be, but because of this unusual requirement for the corner. Um, the red line is the is the existing requirement for for the side yard setback.
And this here, this is the spot that will be designated uh, for for the ADU since it has. And this here, this is the spot that will be designated uh for for the ADU, since it has three habitable rooms, technically it gets its own parking spot, and that's where it would be.
Yes, that's right. So this is the uh elevations of the existing structure. Um the bottom right is is what you see from the from the um interior of the lot. Um that's the entrance into the carriage house. And then you see the uh space for the caretaker above, a fairly modest um structure above. It's a combination of a stone and stucco building, and we're replicating that with the um with the new addition. Um the view on the on the left of it is the cute little view you just saw um from the photograph with the with the ivy-colored covered uh wall. That's the view from Cleveland that you just see a little little bit of it. I'm sorry, from library, where you just see a little bit of the um of the facade. Um the one above that is the greenhouse, which we're not um changing the greenhouse aspect. And then uh the one to the right is the view kind of what the backyard, which will have the new great room and the new porch on 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 that. So here's some more of the existing conditions. You're seeing the side with the doors, and you're seeing the kind of the backside where we're going to be adding the uh the great room. And that's the um flat air open area on the site, where it was originally, they they came to me, said, can we build a building here? Well, well, we could, but we think this is a much more sensitive approach to the site and to the um to the architecture there, what we're what we're now proposing. So these are the views um of the elevations. Um you're they're in the same order of what we were just looking at um on the last one. So you're seeing the uh second floor added above the carriage doors with the doors remaining the same, the bottom level with the stone is the same. It's just that we're just taking off the roof and and raising it up with a with a stucco wall, which will be complimentary, we think, to the stone. Um the um yours to the left, you see this, the view from Library Place. And above that, you see the greenhouse, and you see what what we've done is the the peak of the roof is coming up six feet from what's there now. And uh as a little aside, um this view with the greenhouse, we wanted to extend that stone wall up. And um the contractor feels he's going to be able to capture enough of the stone of the existing house during the demolition to be able to use that again in the new construction. So probably not a detail you need to hear now, but it's going to be a very sensitive um um renovation that will um we really think will complement the house, and a lot of attention to detail is being paid. Um and then the last is the south elevation, which will be um really an opportunity for the the family there. They'll have kind of a private side yard there, well away from the main house. So it's really a um very nice sighting possibility for for them and and location. Are there any questions on the plans or elevations that we've gone through?
I don't have any. Board members, any questions? I guess the only question I have, so you walk around the side of the uh existing garage, and then you walk up the steps to that second level entryway.
That's right, yes, because we we really couldn't put the door on the lower level because of the um the it can't be on the same side of the main of the entry to the principal dwelling.
I understand.
So it also provides more privacy for the ADU, which was kind of appealing to all of us as well.
Sure.
So um so here's the layout on the up the new upper level. Um you'll be coming in by a um mudroom laundry room area. Um you'll then come into the the great room, which is the kitchen dining living space. Um there's there's a hallway there, which takes you down to uh the two bedrooms and and the two bathrooms. So the the ADU does have um the three um habitable rooms, two bedrooms and and a great room. Um and it also has a uh screen porch off the off the back um corner to really enjoy the beauty of the site. And the lower level, um the uh care the caretaker's house did did utilize the lower level. The room on the left side was was their kitchen and their stair going up. But we are turning that back into the main house to provide kind of one-floor living for the um for the current occupant. Uh there's also a room that just gets created below that great room that we're just giving over to storage as well. So not really a lot of changes on this this floor that affect the ADU, just just some things that affect from from building above it. So the zone, yep. Go ahead. Did you want to get into this, Ryan?
Well, I was just gonna say here, this is the zoning chart um uh uh of what is changing and really literally nothing. The only thing that's changing is the amount of coverage that is there, and it's being reduced. Um uh but ultimately, the one variance that we need is the uh existing distance here of uh twenty-six point seven five feet uh uh between the lot line and the existing carriage house location. There's no change there. Uh but by converting to an ADU, we are, I suppose, uh intensifying it, requiring us to come back for the variance for the existing uh condition. But Kathy, if you want to maybe just talk through the the size of of things and and the the height, um you know, it looks like we're you're going up about six feet, you said, right?
Yep, yep, we're going out up six feet. We are we are maintaining the requirement for the ADU for the average grade, so it's it's less than twenty-five feet above the average grade. Um we're uh we were allowed the nineteen twenty-two, so we're doing a nineteen seventeen square foot ADU. It's a nice size for for a family. Um the FAR were were well below what the allowable is. Um as we mentioned, the impervious coverage was already over, but we are able to reduce it by. Um I think the next slide goes into that in a little bit more detail. Um so yeah, so the big the big situation really is the uh the Library Place uh setback. So here's here's the description of that. So I think we've already touched on this, but because the lot is so large and the principal dwelling unit sets in the in the center of the lot, uh we have this unusual requirement, which works for most properties, but in this case, it 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 causes kind of a an unusual situation in that they require us to be five feet back from the uh principal dwelling unit, and the existing carriage house is not set there, and we feel it would be a shame not to not to utilize that that building. Um and just another comment, that twenty-six-foot setback that that the carriage house has, that is not unlike um many of the other houses along um along library. There um they there many of them are around thirty or thirty-five feet, so not so different from the twenty-six feet. There's one that's uh sixteen feet uh setback, um the one that's on the opposite corner of uh and the opposite side of the street. So it 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 doesn't feel, you know, from our estimation, to be inappropriate to have this setback. It's just that we have this unusual requirement for such a large lot, requiring it to be five feet behind the principal uh dwelling unit.
I think this this is the slide you're talking about that shows where a lot of the impervious is being removed. Is that uh is that right?
Yep, we just balanced out the impervious and removed some some things that were not needed around the site to um to make sure that we didn't increase the amount of impervious when we put up the the uh great room and the new the new porch.
So uh with that, if there certainly any any questions for our architect before we summarize, happy to to entertain them.
Any questions of uh the architect?
I have a question.
Oh, please, George.
Can we go back to the floor plan? So the great room.
Oh, Stephen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Uh the laundry room and the mudroom don't count as rooms in an ADU?
No, they're not counted as as habitable space, no.
Thank you. The other I have another question. What's the difference between an ADU and a garage apartment?
Well, I I I'll 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 go to try and and see, then I'll have Derek correct me, but uh ADU is kind of the modern version that is in the code now. The garage apartment is is kind of a uh a an an older artifact from prior zoning that uh whether this was a pre-existing non-conforming that's being kind of expanded, uh would have been an option for us to pursue, but really the to change it into a way that fit the the ADU ordinance, which has some uh positives to it and some kind of quirks to it uh as well, particularly with the side entrance. But ultimately, we we struggled with that one, but ultimately put it in a place that both complies and we think makes sense. But uh uh the garage apartment feature is something that I don't believe is is any longer in the in the code as is being allowed.
Is that right, Derek?
Yeah, it's a it's a good description of it. They were there was a earlier version of accessory dwelling units. They weren't as large as they are now, but um they were pretty common in this section of town in uh you know, detached outbuildings, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Knight, just for clarification, do you know when the house was built?
Uh I think Peter could uh help us with that. I thought it was the early nineteen hundreds.
I think it was the late eighteen hundreds, around 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 nineteen hundred.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Um the kitchen, the old kitchen on the first floor. Does you had talked about it being converted to storage, I think you said. Is that for the ADU, the storage? And do all the kitchen type of appliances and everything and and connections come out of the kitchen?
Ye- yes, the former kitchen was down in this lower room, and um it was ver- it's very modest, so um we were going to and there was a stair going up, so we were going to um remove that and just turn it back to a storage room for the um for the main house. It 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 made more sense for us to put all our square footage on one level um just for the for the ease of the family um family using it, so you don't go up and down the stairs any any longer.
So there won't be any staircase connection between the ADU and the old kitchen?
That's correct, right. There there'll be a it's been an outside entrance to the new ADU, and it's all in the upper level.
And then there's an outside entrance to the the old kitchen for anyone to use as storage?
Yeah, it it's just now a storage room. Yep, yep, great place for bicycles and things like that. So for the for the um uh right off the garage base.
And it's not going to be used as a kitchen anymore?
No, it no, we're removing it, all the uh ca- all cabinetry.
And the appliances?
Yeah, it it will all be re- removed and turned into just a storage room. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we they wouldn't it really wouldn't be worked for us to keep a second kitchen in the in the facility there. Just that wouldn't that would that wouldn't be uh allowed.
I mean, are you going to keep a refrigerator in there or anything like that?
Well, I think a refrigerator would be a choice to to the uh for the homeowner if they wanted to plug in a refrigerator, but we we're not keeping a um a a kitchen with appliances, a working kitchen with a range and appliances in it at that at that location.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a question about the storage room also. So that's not part of the ADU. That's part of the big house.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to sum up before we go into to open it up to the public?
Absolutely. Um first again, thank you all for for your time uh this evening. Uh again, this is the story of the conversion of an existing apartment dwelling, modernizing it under the new rules. Uh the only variance that we need is related to its existing non-conforming location. Um we we believe both under either C one, because it's the hardship to physically move something, uh or C two, uh that it's just better planning to reutilize the uh existing structure, just uh at note of of the the benefi- or excuse me, of the uh uh reasons for zoning, uh we think A, C, E, uh I, J, and and L are all benefited by this. Uh I'm sure you hear from their testimony that there were no detriments uh to this. It allows uh a family to continue to utilize this this property um uh well into the future, uh to have some additional assistance and multi-generational living. Uh you also have the reuse of an existing historic structure and on an unusually large lot where essentially four quite large houses could be built. Yes, there is one uh large historic home here, uh but ultimately what could be built is almost twice what is proposed, uh both in number, so in terms of density from floor area or number of units, uh uh quite a bit else could be happening on this lot. And by keeping with the existing pattern of the historic carriage house apartment, modernized under Princeton's new ADU rules, uh we think we're we're absolutely hitting uh what Princeton is, I'll say what's looking for, but what what the ordinance uh seeks, uh what your master plan is uh interested in seeing in the reuse of these buildings and creating these housing opportunities uh without adding uh density uh that the neighborhood is not not only not prepared to see, but has already been in this neighborhood and is what a small fraction of what could be done on this site. The again, the one variance is just the cost of using the existing building and existing space. You saw photos, it is quite well screened uh from neighboring properties and the street. But even so, uh the the design was done uh very tastefully, the way to complement the house and the history of this structure to allow it to to essentially be used uh into the future uh in a more modern way. Uh again, uh thank you so much for um for your consideration here tonight, and if there are any other questions, certainly happy to address them best we can.
Yeah. Board members, any questions?
Steve, I I do have a question. Um I was wondering if if he could be a bit more specific on how he sees a C one being applicable. Um I've been bouncing back and forth and, you know, given as how C one is is worded.
So I I I I guess I'll I'll agree with you, Mr. Floyd. I think we we asked for essentially a C two. We did mark both on the form because there is uh whilst not related to the narrowness or small size of this lot, because it is not narrow or small by any respect. Uh but there is a hardship element to rebuilding, demolishing uh this historic structure or and and moving an ADU further into the lot. Uh uh so from a C one perspective, I think it's uh less much less applicable than C two, and my suggestion, I guess, would be that C two would be the appropriate analysis. But I did want to mention uh normally you're not speaking of of hardship uh and the existing configuration of the lot with the historic structure uh is similar to the type of hardship you'd look like in a C one, but I I I agree with you that C two would be the appropriate way to look at this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, you're not you summed up already, so we'll open it up to the public. Uh Claudia, is anybody indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
There are no hands.
Okay, so we'll close it to the close the public portion of the hearing. Um once again, Mr. Kennedy, before we go into executive session.
I'll I'll just uh since so little time has passed by, just thank you again for for your time tonight and uh and your continuing willingness to to serve. It's uh much appreciated. I'm glad you can get a little earlier tonight than you might normally, but uh much appreciated that you guys are are.
Excellent choice. Okay, cut you off there. Um okay, um board members, we're in executive session. Questions, comments, motions?
I move, we approve this, and we'll see. What would it be? C one, C two? C.
C two. C two.
C two. I move that we approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, do we have any questions on the motion or discussion? Okay, I'd like to say I think it's a very well-done application, and I did have some concerns initially about its proximity of the street with the second story on it, but I think this is a a very well-done solution. I think uh I think it's a great situation. Okay, um Claudia, can we call it a whole, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the house. It was great.
Thank you. Thanks so much for your time.
You're welcome. Okay.
Come on.
I don't think Karen, we don't have anything else to discuss, do we?
Nope.
Okay, so um that's it. Which we're adjourned until our next hearing next month. Okay, so um that's it. Which we're adjourned until our next hearing next month.
Thank you, Steve.
Good night.
And thank you for choosing me as chairman. I appreciate it.
Good job.
Good night.
Hey, everyone.